All right, Mayor, all mics are on and we are recording.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for rejoining us today, Wednesday, May 29th, as we continue our budget workshop. It's a continuation from yesterday. We did already have our formalities, but seeing there are a few people in the audience, I am more than willing to open public comment for three minutes if anyone wants to talk on the budget agenda. Yes, I'm offering it now because we're down to our last deliberations. So if you wait, it would be after we're done with our—finishing our last round here. So if you would like an opportunity, now's the time.
All right.
Thank you. We're going to get out of here in an hour. That's the goal.
An hour? Okay. Well, then I'll keep it really short. You don't even put the clock on. It won't be that long.
No, that's fine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did get a few things on this first half of this spoken during public session in the regular session, so I don't have to repeat those. All I can say is, when do the bake sales start to cover the $3.5 million a year that we have to come up starting with next month to pay for the wharf? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else seen on the AGP? Any raised hands out there?
There are no raised hands online.
Perfect. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council.
Absolutely, we do. So we left off yesterday having made—received direction from council on the CFAC recommendations. We prepared a few slides for you today to review those changes. You have copies in front of you and—as well as copies of the presentation we've made yesterday. So reviewing the changes to Measure E as it impacts the pavement management program, the RMRA funding is going into that program. That's approximately $270,000. That's an estimate that we received from the state for road maintenance, so it'll come in close to that. We won't know until the end of the fiscal year. And then the Measure E funding is reallocating $350,000. So currently, as it stands, the annual pavement management program is allocated for $24.25,619,999. So we just wanted to review that for you. And then I also wanted to revisit the question of vacancies because we had some public interest and because saying you have 10 positions vacant might mean different things to different people. So I wanted to show you exactly what those positions are as they're budgeted currently in the 24-25 budget. So on the left, the 24-25 new positions you approved yesterday—thank you, Melissa—are the Recreation Specialists for Aquatics and the Recreation Specialists for the Youth Programs and the Assistant to the City Manager. The other positions, other seven positions, are Community Development Director, which has been hired, I believe, with a start date of June 17th, and a Planning Manager, which currently is held by contract by Kim Fowler pending the hiring of the permanent director to make a permanent decision. We also have a vacant sergeant position, which is being actively recruited. We have two positions in utilities, one multi-cert operator, one single cert operator. Both of those, as I understand it from HR, were attempted to be recruited and didn't have a competitive pool or a satisfactory pool. So I believe those recruitments are on hold at this time, but I welcome any input from—the program managers. And then we also have two vacancies in the Administrative Services Department. One's the Accounting Manager actively recruiting and the IT Systems Analyst also actively recruiting. So just a little information for you there.
Thank you for that. We appreciate the update and thank you for sending us that information today. Any questions on these items here, staffing and the updates we just got? No? We left off then—we had moved forward on the appointment of the positions as well as the recommendations from Q and E.
Correct.
So now we are at our next step—or final step, hopefully—of accepting the budget as presented and/or adjustments.
Exactly.
So does someone want to start off the conversation? Anyone ready to start off the conversation? Anyone prepared?
Yes, perfect. Thank you.
Well, I feel like—I—I feel like I'm missing information because I don't have—with the capital work—the Public Works—capital projects—thank you—I don't have all of them. The ones—I only have the ones that we've been given, and I feel like especially after public comment yesterday, for me, I would like to see like the whole list of what we've eliminated—or what we're—there's money in funds for different projects that we—we're told aren't—we're not going to focus on. And I just would like to know what—I see all of them at once before—I feel like it's kind of making a decision in the dark, sort of.
So maybe we can get some comments from staff, either our Finance Director or Public Works Director?
Thank you for the question, Mayor and Councilmember Landrum. And good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. So it's a good point. It's a fair point. And our intention is to provide that during the Capital Projects Prioritization Report and Analysis that we've brought to the P-WAB and CFAC. Some of their feedback was that there were not a whole lot of numbers that we attached to that. And so our goal is to work with the Finance Department to present to the City Council accurate numbers for the capital projects in terms of what was allocated, how much has been spent, timelines, fund balance. And, you know, I think that's a very fair request. We don't have that ready for today. But I would say that when we do bring that report, the City Council is free to direct staff at that time on anything regarding, you know, removing a project or transferring money from one to another. Staff certainly has some recommendations to remove a couple of projects. I'll give an example, the Active Transportation Plan. It would be nice to have. It would give us some access to grant funds. But realistically, you know, to create another plan and then, you know, are we going to have the capacity to write the grants? And then that would be adding new projects that we don't have the capacity to perform. So we thought we could do that in some other year while we catch up on other projects. So, you know, that would involve a return of around $80,000 that would be available for other projects. And so that—that would be our our goal.
Well, I just feel like it's—being asked to make any decisions today feels to me irresponsible because with—without all of that information, it feels like I—you know, we should all have access to that information. And how soon did you say you were going to hear back from?
We're working on a timeline for that. I'm hoping in the next couple of months. It will take a significant lift to pull that information together. The information's in scattered sources. I mean, we've had a lot of turnover in both Public Works and Finance. And we want to create our own record that we could work off of. And that takes a lot of compilation. There's things that are in our finance system that are accurate. There's other things that maybe need to be updated. And then on the Public Works side, we have the same issue. We want to make sure the numbers all add up before we present them to the City Council. And I would just add that, you know, I think—and I don't want to speak for Finance—but I think, you know, the—the idea for the City Council tonight is to either approve or provide other direction on on new requests. And I would just remind the City Council that we—in Public Works—we only have one new request, and that's to look at bridges. And that's as a result of an analysis done by Caltrans. We do have other requests for funding based on other projects that we're currently working on that we had projected to allocate money in the out years, and that's to keep those projects going. But those are not new projects. And I'll just—I'll leave my comments there.
I would like to add to that, though, that the Finance Department has made major headway in tracking all of those fund balances for every single project. We just don't want to present information to you until we've triple-checked it and know it's—it's absolutely accurate. And that's something we have not yet been able to get back to.
Thank you.
So it's heavily on our mind. We don't like—we want to know exactly how much to the penny money we have in every single project, and we're working on that.
Okay. And I—I just—is it—is it—is it unusual to not know how much money is in a project? I mean, it seems like that's—I mean, I'm—I'm asking just like from my own simple perspective. I don't run a city or do the finances for a city, and I really respect what you do. But I'm just wondering if that's—that's normal, that we don't know what the fund balances are?
I don't know what's normal, but it makes us very uncomfortable.
Yeah.
So that's why we're towards it.
I'd add to that, too. So apologies for the interruption. And, you know, I—I at a former city was the Budget Analyst for Capital Projects. And there, we had far fewer capital—even though we were a larger city, we had fewer capital projects than we have here in in Morro Bay. But I was a dedicated person at that city that was looking at this all the time. And every time an invoice came, you know, I would apply it to a certain project. I would be double-checking in the finance system what was in there. There's always going to be mistakes, and, you know, I would catch those and correct them, you know. And again, here with staff turnover and without budgeted staff to look at this in Public Works—I mean, Finance has generously offered to help us with this. But I just—I guess my answer would be, given our staffing resources, I—I think it's somewhat to be expected. It—it isn't that hard to—it would probably take a few hours to figure out one project, exactly where we're at. And so, you know, if there was a question about one project and we wanted to prioritize looking at that project and the financing, we could probably come up with a number in a few hours. Maybe the number we have in the system is accurate, and then we would just be verifying that. Or in some cases, there may have been other adjustments made that were not reflected in the system. You know, the issue here—and I printed them out—and again, these are very rough numbers—but we—we have over 50—around 55 projects in the system. To put all of that together and present it in a way that the City Council can make decisions on it, as as Finance Director Conrad said, I mean, we'd want to make sure that those numbers are for sure correct. The nice thing is, once we go through that exercise, we'll—we'll have a lot of confidence in the accounting that we have, and we'll be able to build off of that, and it won't be such a heavy lift to do. It just—it just hasn't been done here yet.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I may piggyback off of Mayor Protam Landrum, and I—I completely understand where you're going with that. Because if—you know, you look at the beginning of the report, and I know—I recognize some of this as a status quo, kind of boilerplate stuff that we bring forward in that, you know, page 13 area. And we're looking at community vision and community values and—and where we're at each year. And then come election year, you know, you—you've got yet another set of eyes looking at this. And I recognize the challenge of of that, and especially in prioritizing to align, you know, council goal-setting with budget. And here we are, you know, looking to approve a budget, and then we get a new crew in, and that information transfer is something that I've been personally very concerned about, in how we do that. And so I'm—I'm wondering if—if there is a need to kind of take a look at some of the ones that are—that we have here in front of us, and—and if there's anything that maybe you want to drill down that is currently—this is just a thought—is currently in our goals, but that we could foresee, we know, is going to be something, you know, two of us are are going to be continuing on the council. I'm just wondering if there's something within that that you would want to discuss right now that—that might be helpful to you right now. Like, I don't know. I—one that stands out to me is like the Vets Hall, for example. And I'll just kind of throw my thought in there.
Yeah, go ahead.
But so—so we've, you know, allotted a certain amount of money for the Vets Hall, and yet there is this kind of consensus that I'm hearing in the community that maybe we don't want to continue band-aiding buildings and that we maybe have different thoughts about where we're going, for example. And so we—we look at the amount that we're allotting for that, and do I say, okay, are we prioritizing equipment like monitor and audiovisual type stuff, or is it indeed, you know, money that we need for various other parts of the building? So I guess if—I may just kind of take this one as an example, and if we could just get a little bit of insight, Greg, into—excuse me, Mr. Colick—into what that amount of money, the $144,000-plus, right now, where we're looking at?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. And one that excites me, since I'm—I'm managing that project along with a couple of other folks, the City Clerk and our IT Manager, and I think there's a lot to unpack there. So we're trying with the $144,000 request—I mean, we're trying to build up that budget so that we can offer council some options on on what—what you all want to do with this building. So currently, we have an RFQ out. It closes next week. That's a request for qualifications. We're seeking consultants to help us with some of the higher-level decisions about options we have for this building. You know, do we want automated cameras or not? Do we want semi-permanent staff stations here or not? Are there better setups? What are the pros and cons? And that should be a relatively inexpensive exercise. We'll then come back to the City Council and give options for what we want to do with the building. And we'll take that council direction and then go out for an RFP for design and install. And so that is not only going to include, you know, swi—swapping out very old equipment from the 1990s and so on, but also potentially some building upgrades. One of the things that I've noticed that we'll bring up for decision to the City Council is we have issues with our heating system. It tends to be cold in this building, especially when our meetings go a little later. And the heater comes on and no one can hear anything. And so then people ask to have the heater turned off because they can't hear the presentation. We turn it off, and then there's people shivering. And, you know, undoubtedly, this is an old system. Perhaps there's some room for improvement there. We'd like to do some improvements to—to the walls, to make the building a little bit more attractive. That could be an inexpensive way to add some appeal to the building. The walls have to be opened up anyway in some cases to potentially install permanent cameras. And so now would be a good time to do that. But again, we'd want the City Council's input on that. And we want to have enough budget so that if the City Council, you know, wants to make this a bigger project or a smaller project, we can decide at that time. And then any leftover funds in that project budget—if there are any—could be reallocated to other—other projects.
So that is—could I say that that's consistently kind of how you take a look at a project, in essence, and you're allocated this amount of money, you, in this case, put out an RFQ, and then you kind of are breaking down and determining what that money would be used for, in this case, the Vets Hall. But if there's leftover money, then that could be reallocated to another project that you're foreseeing that may need it? Is it—how do you—I guess what I'm trying to say is it'd be wonderful to kind of get a view of how—you how your mind works when you're breaking down a project like this. I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Edwards. And this is actually something we go into a bit in the Capital Projects Prioritization Presentation, is, you know, how—how do we go about implementing these capital projects? I would say some of the items you mentioned are typical. I—I think it's pretty typical, you know, once we have a project completed, if there's fund balance, if there's leftover money, we—we reallocate it somewhere else. And that's—usually happens under the direction of the City Council. And—for other projects, we would not release an RFQ. For many projects, we probably wouldn't come to the City Council for opinions. For example, if—because that work has been done in advance of the project. So one example would be the One Water Plan. We have this One Water Plan that was approved by the City Council in 2018. It was a capacity evaluation of sewer, stormwater, and water lines across the city. It recommended, based on approved general plan—council-approved general plan numbers, you know, based on population expectations, increased expectations, the upsizing of certain water lines and sewer lines to ensure that we can adequately provide water and sewer service to our residents. So in some cases, you know, we're increasing an eight-inch line to a 14-inch line. I wouldn't come back to the City Council three years later and ask, would you like a 14-inch line or 16-inch line? We would just go have the project designed and then construct it. And that's—that would be the goal. So it just depends on the project.
And if I may add one thing about that, about reallocating unspent funds, it depends on the type of funds, right? So if it's—and it would have to be approved by council. So I'm thinking if it's a restricted funding source, like a grant, that would need to go back to the grantor if it's unspent. If it's Measure Q and E funds, we'd need to go back to CFAC. So it—it's not just an automatic reallocating of the funds to a different project.
Thank you for that, Ms. Conrad. Because on on that note, just so I have clarity of how the grant money works, typically, you—you get a certain bucket of money, and—and the idea is to spend all that money, correct? Isn't some of—sometimes grant money—it has to be used for that particular item. So what would happen to that money in—in that case if it was not completely used up?
In—in most cases, and every grant is going to be written a bit differently, but in most cases, any unspent funds must be returned to the grantor.
So it'd be a good idea to spend it?
Yes, spend—spent as—as awarded, according to the plan.
Yeah, thank you.
Usually—usually grants are matching funds, too. So most likely, we're going to spend the grant money before the fund allocation. Yeah.
Well, and—and to carry this—carry this forwards even more. So just using the Vets Hall as an example, to continue using that, how long has this funding been—how long has this process been going?
That's a good question. Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. This project is one of those projects that has evolved. You know, initially, there was a capital project, I believe, for electrical upgrades at the Vets Hall. And I believe there was one for maybe plumbing. I'm looking to Dana—the—although—the roof. And so, you know, there may have been some leftover money from those projects, and then we've added funds. We also get PEG funds—that's Public Education Grant? Access Grant? No, Public— Yeah, yeah. So it's the PEG money. We—we get money for the fact that we broadcast our meetings on Channel 20. And so that money has been accumulating, maybe not enough to be able to do anything with it, but it's been sitting in a fund. And so we've also—I think the City Council added some money last year to the project, and again, we're requesting to add a little more this year. And, you know, it—this kind of goes to a point I—I made yesterday, which is like, we—we can only work towards the funding that's in—in an account balance. So, for example, we could talk about Vets Hall upgrades, but if the funding isn't in the account, we—staff would never try to push a project that we didn't know was funded. And that's—it's maybe counterintuitive, but you sort of need the funding first to be able to understand what you're working towards. And so I'm—I guess what I'm trying to answer there is, yes, sometimes we have funding that's slowly accumulating over time in a project fund, and maybe—maybe we're not working on it just yet until we know that there's enough to actually do the project, if that makes sense.
So last year, like you said, this—this was funded, and we didn't do anything. And so that kind of—how—how did—how does that make sense now to what you just said?
Yeah, so in those cases, we're adding some money one year and another money, you know, the following year. Staff is hoping, when we're making that request, that we'll get started on the project. We don't know. Maybe another project we're working on falls through or gets done more quickly, and then we can move on to this one. We want to have enough money in that first year, you know, just in case we—we can start spending it, we—that the money's there. Knowing, though, that that won't be sufficient for the entire project, and then we'll be expecting additional funds in—in future years. And that's why in—in the ClearGov system, what's nice about it—and I know there are some concerns with that system, but what's nice about it is it does give you the chance to put the money in the out years. Like, you know, for example, with Vets Hall, I don't remember what we requested last year. It's here somewhere. But let's say it was $200,000 last year, but then we said in fiscal year '25, we'll be asking for 144,000. And so, again, that—that is not the same as having an allocation in hand, but it gives us the idea that, you know, we—we are going to be requesting these things. And so we can count on that money as we think about what kind of project we'd be putting together.
But you—you've said you haven't done an RFQ yet. So how will you know that that's enough money to fund anything? Or, you know?
It's—it's a good question. So typically, what we do is we speak to folks in the industry of the field and get a sense from them what projects are going to cost. We speak to other cities that have recently done upgrades to get a sense of what they spend. We're often sharing those with other cities to make sure that we're getting a good deal. And so the estimated costs have been happening.
Yeah. You said you had already done an RFQ, correct?
No, he hasn't.
Yes, the—well, the RFQ is open now.
Right, yeah.
It closes next week.
Yeah.
But they don't—they haven't had a response.
I think that looping into this, just the discussion of the Vets Hall, and I don't want to get bogged down on one project, and that's what's happening if we want to get through this, is—is the money starts accumulating. It's the roof, it's the electrical, it's the this. And to not do the Band-Aid, you're trying to put the whole project together so that you can make a bigger project and address it all. And we did prioritize along last year—or during our goals or during the capital projects—the short, the medium, and the long term. And this was a short-term goal, but in—in our world, in the private sector, short-term might be three months, and in the government sector, that's going to be a year or two. And that's just the reality of it. And so it's a little harder to—
I appreciate that, Mayor. May I speak to that? Because I—I do think there's, you know, a world in which government can work more swiftly on things. But, you know, it's—it's just well-known that we do have capacity issues, and that's every department in the city has that. And, you know, one idea that we were kicking around internally, certainly not anything we're ready to present with any precision today, but is that, you know, we—we could potentially add another project manager position in the Public Works Department in engineering to handle some of these projects and get them done more quickly in a way that's—from an operations standpoint, cost-neutral. I mean, we do have currently a senior civil engineer. He's sitting in the back of the room. He's funded through a blend of four funds: Q and E, water, sewer, harbor. And we could potentially—if the City Council wanted us to look at that and—and bring it back in June or some other time, we could essentially split his position in half in terms of the funding, add half of it to a new position, and then the other half of both positions would be just billed into the projects. And I've talked to the Finance Department as well as City Manager. And of course, this would be at the discretion of the City Council. But it would be cost-neutral in the operations budget that—that you see. What would become more expensive are some of the capital projects. So, for example, if we're going to work on a $3 million or a $3.6 million paving project, that budget does not include staff time. That budget is for design and construction and potentially inspection if we need to hire someone to do that. Well, if we worked under this model, our staff would be charging, you know, maybe $30,000 or so to the project. So instead of, you know, 3.6 million, it would be, you know, 3.5, et cetera. And so that means we'd either be doing a little bit less from a scope standpoint on those capital projects, or we'd have to come back to the City Council and say, hey, we actually need a little bit more for X, Y, or Z capital project to—to pay for the staffing. So I just wanted to put that out there as an idea. It would help us immensely in moving these capital projects forward. I—I understand very well that it's a point of frustration that they're just not happening very quickly.
Does that eliminate some of the need for consultants who are paying for them?
Potentially.
I mean, I'm just trying to find the cost-neutral part. And—and I would—I would hope that as we start moving towards completion of the—of the rest of the One Water or the IPRs, the rest of the—the wharf, and—and moving the Vista project through, those have really been a large amount of staff time. And so I see the potential where there's going to be some room there also.
I appreciate that comment, Mayor, because we—we certainly are all busy. We're all very busy. And I—I do appreciate that acknowledgement. I—I would add FEMA to that. And, you know, the—the concern that I have, the thing that worries me is, you know, what if we have another FEMA event in January? And—and then, you know, whatever we had for capital projects for next year is, you know, now we're doing that. And so my—my experience in Morro Bay has been, every three months, I'll say, oh, you know, in—in three months, we'll be past this, and—and then we're clear. We're going to do all this other stuff, and then new things come in. And so that's been our challenge.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Landrum.
Well, I—I—I—just to finish up the Vets Hall, I—I—what I hear about the Vets Hall is not—not all the other—the other things that you are mentioning, the upgrades. I just hear people that are—that really want to be able to view the—listen to the meetings from remotely. And—and I think that should be the priority there. I—and then also, what I do hear is pavement. They—that's such a—an important thing to people—the—the streets being repaved. And I think that is a priority for me as well. And in looking at the budget, it's brought it—brought out that it's the city's most valuable asset. And I think if you—if you— And I think if you, if you can, if, if that is the most valuable asset, it makes, it's very logical to take good care of the streets and to make sure they're in good condition, and I feel like we should prioritize that. I'm not, I'm not, I'm thinking the Nutmeg Tank and that 1.8 million maybe is, I mean, does that need to be funded so high? Does that, do we, I mean, is it something that's going to happen anytime soon? Do we, it's got, it's got something to do with updating, didn't it say you have to update the One Water Plan first?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. I don't think we need to update the One Water Plan first to move that project forward. We've actually done quite a bit of work on the Nutmeg Pressure Zone project. The initial look at it from the One Water Plan was talking about replacing the tank. And we, we kind of got on that track, and, you know, then all, you know, as we're doing the math, well, it needs to be bigger and bigger, and now it's a $20 million project. And, you know, with the assistance of new staff and some other folks, including a consultant, we're, we're looking at drastically revising that project to be less expensive. And we're hoping to do it in the $7 to $8 million range. That's not a promise, but we don't think we need to replace the tank at this point. We think that there's other upgrades around the water system we can make, which will be expensive, just not as expensive, that will achieve the same goal, which is to improve the fire flow in the Nutmeg Pressure Zone, which is a large part of North Morro Bay. You know, the concern there is if the water isn't available in a way that's coming in fast enough at the right pressure, then, you know, if there's a fire in, in one area of town, and then there's something else in another area of town, we may just not have enough water in the system to be able to help people. And so that's the goal there, and the folks we have on the team right now think we can do it in a different way. And so that's just one example, there's other projects as well where we're looking at ways where we can knock off some of these big ideas and, but still provide the same results and at a better price, really, for, for the City Council and the community.
Greg, was one of the considerations of changing and working on that Nutmeg project, insurance for citizens, how I keep hearing about different cities and places having their insurance canceled, you know, and so people are not able to have to go find new insurance, and so I'm just thinking of that project as one that that would be an important piece of it. So I'm just curious whether that's been a consideration as you've been working on this.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Barton. I can't speak to the insurance question. I would imagine insurance, homeowners, homeowners' insurance, insurers would be interested to know whether or not the city the home is in would, you know, be able to put out a fire. But, yeah, that, that one has not crossed my desk, but that, that makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, there's a lot of challenges with the original project as conceived. If you've ever been up there, if you haven't, I'd be glad to take you, but if you've ever been up to the Nutmeg Tank, it's actually very difficult to access. There's this retaining wall, which, you know, looks good, but we're not sure if it's reinforced, we don't have plans for it. We're taking, you know, large construction vehicles up there at a high rate, at a high frequency. It's just no bueno, honestly, it, we, so, and it's also very expensive. And so, yeah, we were, are looking at other alternatives there for several reasons. We don't have a full project scope wrapped up there, but we are working with Canon Consulting to help us with that.
Does, does that, the fire flow number have to do with the One Water Plan, though, the total build-out of the city? Which, which we're not moving towards?
So now we're going a little technical, see if I can get someone up to answer that. Yep, this is Austin Della, Senior Civil Engineer, employee since October, and student of the One Water Plan.
Is this on? Yeah, so basically, everything is, the Nutmeg Tank was completely driven by numbers in the One Water Plan. There's basically three requirements, there's emergency storage, there's fire flow, and then there's like operation equivalency or equalization. And so basically, we have a deficit in fire storage in all of the zones. And so we're working with Canon on figuring out how to potentially consolidate two zones into one, and then moving our storage elsewhere. So we're kind of avoiding the high construction costs just based on the location of Nutmeg. Those are kind of like the, the details, but the idea is avoiding the construction up on the Nutmeg site, because that's what's driving the cost.
But, but the requirements are for the total build-out of the city, which is 12,000-something residents?
Yes, and that's the, kind of the idea with this, is it's a phased approach with this other model. So like with a tank, you can't really phase a tank, like, can't really add layers or build a tank up slowly to kind of meet the accommodation of the future build-out. You just build a tank that's going to meet the future build-out. But with this phased approach plan, we're going to be doing small, you know, we'll connect the pressure zone in two spots in the next few years. That way, we'll consolidate one zone and get a better flow, not the ideal flow. But then the next project will, will increase a few pipe sizes. I'm just kind of being very vague with, you know, the, the plan. But it's, it's going to be phased approach so that ultimately, over, you know, a certain amount of years, we will kind of get closer to that, that goal of what our fire flow should be. And that fire flow is, is set by One Water Plan and working with the Fire Department.
And I'll just add to, the Nutmeg Pressure Zone project included, and includes more than just that tank upgrade. We have to remove one of our Blanca tanks, it's unusable at this point, and we may wind up removing both of them. There's a, there's a pump in the beach tract that is, is in someone's front yard, it's very loud. And we, we want to create efficiency so we don't need that pump. Also, the water lines that are feeding the Nutmeg Tank are very small in diameter, and so it requires like constant pumping of water, and sometimes we, we can't keep up with the demand as much as we'd like to fill that tank. So in other words, there's more, there's more water coming out of Nutmeg Tank than water we can put in because of how narrow that line is. And so there, there are a bunch of upgrades that are part of that overall Pressure Zone project, so fire flow is one piece.
Didn't we do a bunch of work on the Blanca tanks recently?
We just rehabbed the Blanca tanks, and yeah, we recently completed that capital project.
But, but you just said they're unusable.
This is the Elena tanks.
Oh, you said Blanca, you must have...
I apologize.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, can, I want to refocus this back to the budget, because we're going to have this...
Well, I know, but we're going to have this meeting separate on the capital project. Right, but, well, I'm suggesting that that is a potential to switch some of that money towards, towards roads, because it's, it's not...
Okay, so I'll write that down as a note, so you're interested in moving some of that money?
Yeah, like possibly.
If I could make a comment, Mayor, and just, so the money that would go into Nutmeg Pressure Zone project is, it's from the water fund that's paid by the repairs, yeah, so we would be able to use that.
Good, you're right, you're right. Okay, scratch that, but, yeah. Anything else?
I have a, oh, no, go ahead, go. Okay, I have a question, I have a question regarding the various accounts for capital projects, and I know it was brought up by one of our community members about yielding interest, or, you know, higher interest, and I'm just curious, are we getting interest on those separate pots of money that we're reserving for the capital projects? And if, if we aren't, is there something we could consider while we're waiting for these projects so that we're not, so we're at least making money in the process? If you could just explain that a little bit better to me, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, so, yes, we are earning interest on almost every dollar that we have in our banks. And the money in these funds are not, they're representing all of our cash, right? So we have $20 million in an interest-bearing account in Mechanics, we have $30 million or so, sorry, I don't have these numbers right in front of me, but in the Leif account, which is earning interest at 4% or above. And then we have $12 million in our various investments with US bonds and Treasury bills and CDs that are locked in at various rates, but not terrible rates, pretty good rates mostly. And so, yes, all of our, almost all of our cash is earning money, except for a few Mechanics Bank's accounts that are daily operating accounts, payable, payroll accounts.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. I don't have any other questions right now, thanks.
Councilmember Barton?
No.
So we'll circle back here again then and talk about, is there any interest in moving any funds from any of the accounts, or, I'll just start out, I am, I'm interested in moving some of our reserve money. The, the, I appreciate all the work that the finance team has done, along with the executive team, the City Manager, and all the department heads, and I appreciate and support this. I'm just going to say, I, in finance, you always overstate your expenses and understate your income, you know, to be safe about everything, and the budget is conservative, which I love, because I'm conservative when it comes to money. Inflation has been hard on everybody and has affected things, and when I look at the projections, I don't, I don't, I'm not going to look at it as doom and gloom because I'm a realist, and I can't imagine that the inflation stage we're in right now is going to go on forever. It just doesn't seem like that would be possible. Highway 1 closure for two summers has definitely affected the tourism out on the coast, that's opening again. We see our TOT for our county is up, we're working towards uplifting projects on our waterfront. We've added 83 rooms with the Hampton Inn, which were factored in, we added 17 more rooms with two other hotels. We have 20 rooms approximately in the Quonset Hut, Harbor Street, and Market Villa's coming in. We have other projects on the waterfront, so I see a lot of TOT potential. There's always a consideration to look at TOT increases, maybe, not now because we're close to the election, but the next round, if we're in line with other communities in the county, other cities, or is there room for a half percent or 1% there for revenue generation? But I see a lot of the things we're doing as revenue generating. We've been a city for 60 years, and we've managed quite well. I sat in the seat during a recession, and we managed, and I think that the city's done a really good job this past year in really addressing investments. With the interest rates being higher, we were not capitalizing on that, and we have been now, so that's been really positive. I appreciate, I like the idea of, of tracking the fund balances a little better. I think that will help us understand the need to put the money into the projects, the capital projects, and, and have that fund in there so you can make those projections. None of it's locked in so much that if there's an emergency, we can't move something, that's always the option. We saw that with the failure of the sewer lines over on Jennifer, I think it was, where we shifted some money and moved it over and took care of the problem. So, so there's always that ability to move those things around, so I feel comfortable with that. And our reserve fund is extremely high, and I hope that we're going to have that conversation, I think we are, about where we think that should be once staff has an opportunity to evaluate those levels. So my ask, my only ask is, I have a concern looking at the budget projections for the paving, and the idea that next year we would have $2.6 million put in there is not realistic. We've never put that much money in in any one year. We have $600,000 approximately, give or take, right now, that's going there from Q and E and, and the SB1, so I'd like to see if there's council support to move, again, it's just moving it over, but putting it there to hold us to it, to move a million dollars out of our reserve, emergency reserve that is at almost 50%. To put that placeholder there, and then next year, I think when you look at the budget, we're not so pressured to have to say, how are we going to come up with this $2.6 million, because we didn't put anything there last year. If we can only fund a million, which seems to be kind of where we fall each year, I would feel better. So that's the one change I'm looking at. So I will open that up and move it down to one end or the other to see how you feel about supporting that, or if there's something else someone has in mind.
I, I support that, I would support more than that, I think that the streets are really, really important, yeah.
Well, and speaking with Mr. Qual, like, you know, about the money that we have there now, my understanding is, in like one minute, can you tell us where we are with all that money and where it's going and when it's going? Or less, one minute or less?
Yep, we are putting together the bid, bid should go out by the end of June or early July. That'll be open for a month, and we should have a contractor onboard September-ish to spend the money that's in the account.
Perfect, and part of that would be because we do have a resolution that says we do not pave in the downtown and business areas Memorial Weekend through Labor Day Weekend, so that works pretty good with that, so. And most of that will be spent down then, is that the goal, that we have that big pot there now that's going to go for, for this?
Yes.
Thank you. And also, I would share, too, that with the last year's budget, we had unforeseen expenses, as has been shared, we can always have, but for the storm expenses, but we're looking at insurance and FEMA money that we know guaranteed, that was stated at about $445,000 from our Finance Director, and then whether or not we pursue other projects with funding along the way. So I think that money coming back in to replace what went out, but some of those things make me feel like we still have a very comfortable place. I'm seeing a head nod, like there's something more to it.
Everyone's looking at me, you know, I, I hear what you're saying there, and I, I understand that we do have a high reserve, and, you know, and being that it is, you know, in the surveys that we put out, it's always a high priority that our services, our fire, our police, and, and our streets kind of always seem to be like the top of the, the list. I would agree with you, I do want to point out, you know, if we're going to whittle down our reserves, we most certainly have to look at revenue generation moving forward, and have some, you know, heavy conversations about that, because I think that we cannot sustain our current services at this rate. Over time, we saw that our, our reserves will be going down over the next few years, and so, and so my concern, I mean, I, I support that as of right now, but I think with that support, we have to, as a council, understand that it comes with that responsibility of generating more revenue, and I don't know which way, but...
Well, and I agree with that, but again, I feel that, I feel that some of that revenue is potentially understated as far as our tourism, huh?
Yes. Yeah, and, and I have to say that, you know, with the storms that are coming, and just acknowledging the fact that our ocean's temperature is rising and, and our tides are rising, I think that we have to just be really responsible with, considering that we will most likely have major events happening on a regular basis, and so, so, you know, maybe $1 million now, but I think, you know, moving forward and with future councils to really try to hold on to our reserves as much as possible, because I think we really truly need to just assume these things are going to happen, and not just kind of, you know, oh, well, maybe it will, maybe it won't. I think that planning for it to happen versus being reactive to when it happens. And so just, I just need to say that, and, but I do support what you're saying, Mayor. And I agree that our streets need to have that money, we need to, we need to put money into our streets. Can I ask, so if, if the streets are the city's most valuable asset, how does that affect the insurance of the city if the streets are, the condition of the streets of the city? I mean, because if it's an asset, it's being insured, right? Or, or it helps our rating, like for loans or for our credibility, like having a...
As far as insurance, I don't believe the streets are specifically listed as a location. All of the buildings are, and city-owned property is covered, like from a liability standpoint, but the streets in terms of their value, I don't believe are covered on our policy. It's possibly they could be, but they're not now.
Well, if it's, if it's our most valuable asset, and it's worthless or, or very low, then our, our value is...
then our, our value is affected. So it seems like it's, it's a really good priority to have.
So let me try to answer that, that a bit. There is fixed asset and then those, the streets are not, but once we start putting on the, fixed asset means those, like on the buildings, the facilities, those, those are asset and then they are showing on you, on the finance, on an audit, being audited. And we have to do a report, so financial department, you do all that. Now, as far as the roads goes, the roads, when you say have value, especially if you put, they become a capital improvement project. If you, if you pave the street, the street, there's a value because you put so much into that. And then there's depreciation. You have value, then you have depreciation, depreciation, and then that leads it to your plan. You, a lot of cities, many cities do not have the money to keep up with depreciation and then just depreciate it out, so there's no more value. That's why there's no insurance because there's no more value. And then once you knew, there is a value to it.
Thanks.
And I just want to kind of point out too that I think that one of our greatest values in our city is our staff. And so I think, you know, streets right now, yes, but I think in the future, if we're going to dip into reserves, one of the things that we really could look at is, you know, creating new positions and alleviating the five hats that our staff members are wearing and maybe if we can enhance efficiency in all of our departments by having more hands to get things done, I think that that could also help us in the long run, such as the capital projects and those types of things that we talked about yesterday. And I, I don't know, but I just think that that's very valuable as well as the physical things that we repair and, and take care of, but it's also our staff.
Thank you for that. And, and I think to answer one of the questions earlier about the water, Councilmember Landrum, was that we get ratings, insurance ratings, and so it does factor into the ratings for the, probably for our risk management ratings for our insurance, but we're rated based on all levels of things. But I certainly agree with Councilmember Barton that, I live over on the north end of town by where that Nutmeg Tank is and just renewed my insurance. And one of the biggest issues that the insurance, my insurance dropped me because they don't insure here, had you had a new company and they looked at that whole area just outside the city limits as a fire zone. So it does definitely have an effect. So if there are no more recommendations or questions, I would be looking for a motion to approve this recommended budget.
I have one question and you're probably not going to like it because it's going a little off subject, but I still think it's a good time to ask it. So we, we, I have asked for a future agenda item to, that we have a conversation about the difference between an in-house person to handle, speaking of staff, an in-house person to, to handle business licenses and TOT. And I feel like that should be part of this discussion too, or, or I feel like it should, we should.
Not today. This is just strictly the budget workshop.
Well, no, I know, but it should be sort of included in the budget or are there, there, how, how does that work into?
Let me, I think Finance Director and I had a brief discussion on this. You want to, you want to pick up on it?
Yes, we did have a brief discussion. I would like to, because we're under contract right now with HDL, I think we, it would be prudent to continue that contract and postpone a discussion, a public discussion at this time. But we are hearing the community's requests and complaints and those keep me up at night, those kinds of things. So what we want to do is provide excellent customer service. We're hearing feedback from plenty of people that they're not getting that. And so we're absolutely having those conversations about what to do about that. But since we are in the middle of a contract, I'd like to revisit the topic at a later date.
When does that renew?
Let me look that up. I was just pulling it up.
And, well, Director Conrad is looking for the contract and I just want to add that I, I think this is a good plan because, again, I'm going back to what I said yesterday, it's relatively new team. The Finance Department, you see the vacancy, the Finance, the Accounting Manager is still vacant. We're trying to recruit that position and that's going to be very, it's a key position for these day-to-day, day-to-day finance, accounting kind of issue. So I, I felt like we're not quite ready to talk about that, although on a staff level, we talk about that all the time. When we talk about short-term rental and we discuss that, okay, there's HDL issue and when we discuss, most recently, even when we were considering the contract with Chamber of Commerce, we even put that on there just because we wanted to provide the high-level customer service that council expects. And, and we really take, like she, she said, we really take it very seriously. At this point, just feel like you want to bring in-house, we, we need to figure out space, where to put a person, we need to figure out some, some logistics things, one, is one thing. And how do we implement that? When you have a person, somebody you need to supervise with the workload and, and with the finance structure, it's missing the finance, the accounting manager position. And then Community Development Department is having a new director. It's just really challenging to, to do another change, something like that.
Well, I appreciate your.
Input.
Putting that on, on, on the, on, on top of the, the list. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, we do. You believe us. We, we do talk about that. We're just not ready to, to move yet.
Yes, I agree with those comments. So the, it's a three-year contract that began in March of 2022, so it will, the term ends in March of 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newmeyer, is this our city manager, one or the other? Is this a direction or is this a motion on this, recommendations?
So this meeting is to provide direction to staff on any changes when they come back on July 11th. So.
No motion.
Just recently, you'd mentioned moving money out of the reserve into pavement. I would think that if there's consensus on council to do that, that would be direction to staff unless you want to have a motion. And then if there's anything else that was covered yesterday that you want to change in the budget that's brought, otherwise, the presentation, the budget and everything that's been presented, this will be brought back June 11th.
Perfect.
And.
Thank you.
You know, this is meant to make sure we don't have a 10-hour meeting on the 11th.
Works for me. Thank you very much. With that, may I ask Director Conrad?
So regarding the funding of the annual pavement program, are you wanting to increase what's currently allocated by 1 million? Are you wanting to get that number to 1 million?
No, by 1 million.
So in, ultimately, you want 1.61999, okay.
Thank you.
And would you allow staff the opportunity to research other funds that might have available dollars to allocate rather than taking it from the reserve?
The emergency reserves that are at almost 50%. You mean like Q and E or somewhere or a partial? That, that's fine. I'm fine with that. If there's some other options, but.
Okay.
I, I just still see our reserve fund at an extreme high level and knowing that, putting that place card there guarantees us a commitment to paving next year that we wouldn't have otherwise. I know that it's also liquid enough that if there was an emergency, it can always be moved. And I think we all recognize that. But, but putting that placeholder there so that we keep our forward motion on the paving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. If there's nothing further on this budget study session, I will say thank you, everyone, for coming back today and thank you to the staff for your work on this. We appreciate it, all of us. Thank you. With that, we're adjourned.